Franklin County, Board of County Commissioners back in session. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Amy Kelly, planning the zoning report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, we have a recommendation that was unanimous, contingent upon receiving the DEP and core permits. It's a consideration of a request to construct a single-family dock located at Unit 1, Block Q, Lot 5, also known as 2308 Highway 98 East, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway for the dock will be 197 foot by four feet with a six-foot by 20-foot terminus and one 12 by 20 boat lift. Approval will be contingent upon the DEP and core permitting request submitted by Garlic Environmental, agent for, oops, Orion Weddington, and there is a house on the property.
All right, just board.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masterson, second by Commissioner Parrish. Any more discussion on that? On paper?
Aye.
On the poll? That passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Number two, we have a recommendation for approval. It is also contingent upon receiving the DEP and core permits. Consideration of a request to repair a single-family dock located at Lot Track 3, Yancy Tracks, also known as 2602 Highway 98 East, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed project consists of repair to the existing 159-foot access walkway and to construct a 154-foot extension, as well as add an eight-by-20-foot terminus and a 10-foot-by-20-foot boat lift, including the 636 square foot of the existing walkway and the 616 square foot of the proposed walkway and the 160 square feet of terminus. The project total is 1,412 square feet. Approval is contingent upon the DEP and core permitting request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for Bobby Whitten, and there is a house on the property.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Masterson, second by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay. Number three, we have a recommendation for approval. It was unanimous. Consideration of a request to construct a single-family dock located at Lot 4, Block 2, Unit 1, also known as 612 Mariner Circle, Alligator Point, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway is 100 foot by four foot with a 10-by-16-foot terminus, a 13-by-20 covered boat lift, and two additional pilings within Alligator Harbor Preserve. Client has DEP permit and is exempt from core permitting, which means DEP was allowed to issue the core permit. Request submitted by Daniel Ogley Mueller, the applicant, and there is a house on the property.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Burke, second by Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Masterson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay. Number four, we have a rezoning application. We had a recommendation for approval, a six-to-one vote. Consideration of a request to rezone a 22.77 acre parcel from R1 to R1A, located at 2153 Highway 98, Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for William Simmons.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masterson, second by Commissioner Bolt. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Chairman, this is for authorizations to go to the public hearing.
Yes.
Right. Get for the public.
They also had a sketch plat. This would be, it was recommended approval, six-to-one vote, contingent upon the approval of the rezoning request being approved at the public hearing. Consideration of a request to abandon original plat and for sketch plat approval of a 22.77 acre parcel, the proposed new plat for the 22.77 acre parcel, Shell Bay subdivision proposes 36 parcels, including two lots and a common area south of Highway 98, lying in Section 35 Township 7 South and Range 5 West, located in Carabelle, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates, agent for William Simmons.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Burke.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Amy, on this particular item, and this request goes back many, many, many years.
Yes, sir.
I don't understand, and I know it says here, "No action required until after recommendation from the Board of Adjustment for the variance." I don't understand how you can go through a special exception when it's noted in this particular C1 zone that residential uses are strictly prohibited.
I respect.
How can you go through and put this through as a special exception when you have prohibited uses, residential uses, in C1 district? Having said that, you know, I've always opposed this. As we all know, the bay is down now, the industry is down now, people are looking to transition to other things to make a living. I understand all of that. I do understand that over here in the Two Mile area, there's a lot of people there that's going to want to go the same way. So this is precedent setting.
Yes, sir.
I just want to put that out there. I know you're not asking for no action here today. So I don't really know why it's on here, but it is. But I just want the board to understand that this is the first of many. If this is granted, this is the first of many. And another question I had is, how does this fit into your flood plan when you allow these residential uses in a C1 commercial fishing district? As everyone is aware, the only thing you can build on ground level is water-dependent uses. These are not water-dependent uses. So are they going to have to be jacked up in order to meet your flood plan requirements of FEMA? I don't know. I'm just throwing this out there, and you've got time to research it and come back to the board with answers when it comes back to this board after it goes to BOA. But there are a lot of issues here that need to be addressed because if we treat one person this way, then I feel like everybody else should have the same opportunity.
Yes, sir.
And that's the way I've always done things. If John can do it, why can't Sally do it if they're within the same district? Also, the C1 District has no setbacks, no side setbacks, no front setbacks, no setback from the water because it's typically been used for water-dependent uses. All this needs to be well thought out, and I don't see how you can do it as a special exception when residential uses are strictly prohibited. I don't see how you can grant a special exception to a prohibited use. But those are my concerns, and I'm only one member of this board, but I just want to point that out. As many years serving on the P&amp;Z Board, I know what the Comprehensive Plan says, and I know what the Land Development Code says, and I know how the two work together. So I just wanted to bring that out. Not saying I'm opposed to it, but there's a lot of questions, and I know it will be precedent setting because we just issued some letters out to the people in the Two Mile area that had to remove different things, could not rent out the rooms at steamers, above steamers. It's already a restaurant, which is a tourist-oriented facility, so this is going to lead to other things. And I understand the base is down now, people are looking for ways to make a living. I understand that. Just wanted to point out all these different issues that need to be addressed. The way I think about it, these issues need to be addressed before you proceed down this road. Those are my comments.
Any more discussion? All right, the board, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Your suggest, Mr. Chairman says no action required, so what are we voting on?
I think it was the authorization to proceed forward with the abandonment of the plat of Shell Bay subdivisions, what I thought we were dealing with. Has that been unmistakable, or is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought the motion was.
Okay, I thought we moved out of number four. We have not.
We kind of jumped a little bit, but yes, we was the abandonment of Shell Bay. They don't want to abandon until after the rezoning has been approved through the public hearing.
Okay, that's a whole different item.
Different item, yes.
I thought it had already been voted on, so.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, just for the record for the board on Shell Bay, one of the issues that we had to contend with was Shell Bay many years ago when it was originally being, I guess, platted, was they had, I believe it was six lots along the bay and the number of interior lots across the road that they also wanted to try and give boat slips to. And at that time, the board would not allow those landlocked lots on the north side of Highway 98 to have boat slips. The entire subdivision was allowed to have 12 boat slips because there, as I recall, six lots along the bay. So that's just something we need to keep our eye on and look at as we move forward this process.
Is this particular parcel served by central sewer and water?
It will be, yes, sir.
It will be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If you remember, this is where they had the subject matter for discussion years ago was what we called the Great Wall that was built, and the backfill was put in to bring the property level with Highway 98, just in case some of you may not know the area that we're talking about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Do we move on to pass the major project? Do we move on to the major project?
I think we just went over that.
I'll move on to item number five, commercial site plan application. That was a recommendation for approval. It is solely unanimous, contingent upon the Health Department approving and permitting the location of the septic system. This is a consideration of a request to construct a 6,225 square foot commercial space containing a restaurant, coffee shop, and retail space, lying in Section 29 Township 9 South, Range 6 West, also known as 243 East Gulf Beach Drive, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. Request submitted by Stephen Hall, agent for Hall House on St. George Island.
All right, get the board.
I want to ask a question for you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Amy, there's, going back to times that were before me being here, there's not any issues with this as far as flood plan at all, is there?
It is located in a flood zone.
But nothing with what they're doing?
Yes, sir. The grade is pretty high. They're not going to have to go up very high to meet their base flood elevation.
Okay. And as I understand from reading the stuff with the septic and the grease trap, it's something that's being approached by the Health Department, correct?
Yes. I sent over information to the Health Department concerning the grease trap tanks and the septic tanks that is proposed to be placed under the parking area on the alley side. That raised a red flag, so I sent it over to the Health Department, and the applicant and developers are aware that if the Health Department does not approve the location of the septic system tank and the grease traps, that this permit is dead in its tracks. They would have to come back for something that would be approved.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve this project, contingent upon the Health Department approving and permitting the location of septic tank and grease trap.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor. Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Parrish, with exceptions. Any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay. That concludes my agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Didn't need it. I told them. Let me think. Did all of them. What did the readers on the agenda?
They were, Mr. Smokey, we asked Michael Shuler concerning that, should we read it and show the location, and he said that we thought we had addressed it through the, I mean, I can present it.
Mr. Chairman, she.
If you'd like.
If I may. Ms. Amy asked me if she should present again, or present after Commissioner Parrish's comments. I thought that had already been adequately covered on the agenda, but that's clearly up to the chairman and the board.
But they're good to go with it.
I think there was, I haven't read the item, but from what I understand, there was no action, just an informational item to the board, no action for the board to take.
That's what I understood, is this information.
Yeah, I think the next step is they will have an application to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment will then conduct a public hearing and then make a recommendation back to this board, most likely next month. I don't really know what the scheduling is.
Yeah, it'll be August the 7th, Board of Adjustments, and then August the 20th for the Board of Adjustment Recommendation Agenda. And I will address all of the questions and everything.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Next on the agenda. Grant Slaton, Second Circuit Code Administrator, Security.
Good morning, Chair Lockley, and good morning, fellow county commissioners, and good morning to Madam Clerk, Marsha Johnson. Always good to see you here. Grant Slaton, I'm the Trial Court Administrator for the Second Judicial Circuit Court, and I represent Chief Judge Jonathan Scherstrom today. And I want to thank you for being given the opportunity to briefly present the security improvements that we've made here in Franklin County as a result of the courthouse security exercise we held last year. This is only an update being offered to you. We're not asking for any action from the board, but we do appreciate the opportunity to come and explain some of the improvements that we've been able to make. As many of y'all probably recall, we had a courthouse security exercise last year in the Franklin County courthouse and in the environs here, and the exercise proved to be very successful for us. We had trained 98 courthouse employees and an additional 26 first responders on the needs of courthouse security. We had representatives also from the First Judicial Circuit to our west and the Third Judicial Circuit to our east, and also the Escambia County Sheriff's Office came and observed the exercise. And it's interesting, the First Circuit and Escambia County Sheriff's Office used your exercise as a model to conduct their exercise, and so they appreciate that, too. They were able to learn from the experience we had here. I've got some thank yous that I'd like to share. We wanted to thank the Franklin County Sheriff, A.J. Smith, and he took a lead role in helping to prepare for future security incidents by helping with the security exercise and devoting both staff and time, including his personal involvement as the incident commander. We also wanted to commend courthouse constitutional officers, and specifically, of course, Clerk of Court, Marsha Johnson, property appraiser, Rhonda Skipper, and the tax collector, Richard Watson, who all helped, gave their leadership and staff time to help with the exercise that was conducted on a Friday afternoon. Other community partners who helped were the Appalachia Cola Police Department, the State Attorney's Office, the Public Defender's Office, the Franklin County Government, Franklin County Emergency Management, Weems Memorial Hospital, and the University of Florida, all helped out in the exercise in one capacity or another since we had so many people getting trained. The goal of the exercise was to train Franklin County law enforcement personnel, emergency first responders, and courthouse staff on how to react during a courthouse active shooter incident or other violent incident in the courthouse, and most importantly, not just to protect the court employees or the court itself, but the public who come into the courthouse each and every day. So the chief judge thought it was incumbent, we have a plan, and then we exercise and demonstrate our plan to help protect the public. The key tasks were to analyze and improve procedures for courthouse security, very importantly, to use existing resources, existing material, equipment, personnel, so there'd be no additional cost, but just use those things better. Coordinate and collaborate so we would learn to work together and work with each other. We're stronger as a group. And then exercise incident procedures of law enforcement so that everyone becomes familiar with how that would work. All these tasks and more were successfully accomplished by part of the exercise. We have made and will continue to make improvements to the facilities, too. The exercise identified some areas where we needed to make improvements to the facilities, and we were able to use court fee monies, monies that the court collects for state court operations, and also some end-of-year facility funds and other monies that were available to fund some of these minor improvements that we've made. And so none of the monies came from general revenue. County facility fees totaled, I think, about $9,825, and that was money that was already budgeted and already set aside to do things with facilities. We just reutilized the money in this particular fashion. The chief judge also contributed $19,598, more than twice as much of money that he has access and control to. The result of these expenditures was severalfold. We created a second dedicated bailiff station, as you're aware, out front here. We upgraded the closed-circuit TV system, and one good note, too, we did that using a local vendor instead of using somebody from Tallahassee or out of the city, and we saved a lot of money doing that. So that's sort of a way ahead in the future. Use local vendors, and I think it'd be less expensive, and then you get more value for the court's money. We established access control points and badge readers at new locations and in different offices. We made fire and life safety alarm upgrades so the first responders will know where to go to quicker and what the incident is. And we created additional duress alarms, and these are panic alarms folks can use, and set those up. Lastly, we're in the process of hardening the entrances to better protect the bailiffs and others at the entrance to the courthouse, and that's really the focal point, I think, sometimes for trouble that may occur. These will include ballistic glass and bulletproof materials, and fabrication is underway for these things. It'll be a safer courthouse entrance, but it won't be something that looks oppressive or would look as a place that's not inviting for the public. And this should be completed by about October of this year, again with those monies I mentioned earlier, so no additional funds. In conclusion, we want to thank everyone for their help and assistance, both with the exercise and, of course, the follow-up over the last year making these improvements. I personally wanted to particularly thank Michael Marone. Did a great job. He's a tireless worker, a good colleague, so I just thank you publicly for your support for this stuff. You've got a great county staff to work with. We appreciate it. And that completes my presentation. Subject, any questions y'all may have?
We appreciate what you're doing, and it'll help the people be safe.
Can you tell us any incidences that you know of that county commissions in Florida have faced relative to safety and concerns that have spun off some of your help here?
Yes, sir. There have been some incidents, and I think the interest in this particular exercise stemmed from an incident in Orlando, shootings in Orlando, but those things unfortunately are occurring with more and more frequency and something that we think the court should be aware of and able to respond. You know, every day, we make hundreds of people come to the courthouse for court events, and probably a lot of them don't want to be there, but they have to come for various reasons, and some of the people may get upset. And so I think we wanted to create an environment that is as safe as possible for those individuals. Of course, we want to be fiscally prudent, use existing resources to do so, and I think we were successful in doing that. So it wasn't any particular incident, but there's been a series of them that have just heightened concerns about our need to provide a safe environment to redress legal issues.
That's an old saying, when you're a boy, be prepared.
Absolutely. Better safe than sorry, maybe. If there's any more questions, thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. The hot seat. Next on the agenda, H.D. Carrington. Weems CEO. Come on up, Mr. Carr.
My name's H.D. Cannington, and I'm the CEO at Weems Memorial Hospital, and I appreciate y'all allowing me to come in and talk about two or three items. The first one is, at the Weems West Clinic over on the campus of the hospital in Appalachia Cola, we have, I believe it is, four HVAC units. They're all, they all were old. We replaced two of them before the summer. The third unit, we had hoped to get us through the summer, but we've had to have some minor repairs over the past couple of weeks, two or three weeks, and so I would like for you to approve the purchase of an HVAC unit at a cost of $4,950. It's about 10 years old, and like I say, it seems like it's on its last leg.
All right, the board.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. The second item is, I was asked to present a financial status on two or three items. First is, as of yesterday, we had, in our checking accounts, in our regular operating account, and also in our money market account, we had $433,070. Second item is that our trade accounts payable, and I think this was run on Friday afternoon, and we had $228,654 in our trade accounts payable, plus we had a payable on there of $621,000 to Tallahassee Memorial Hospital, and that's for management services for past years. You know, that amount is not increasing any. It's also not decreasing because, you know, they have, you know, they're not asking us to pay that. We still owe it, but the last time I talked to Mark O'Brien, the CEO at Tallahassee Memorial, he said they're not really worried about it, whatever that means. And then the third item is, I was asked to provide what our net accounts receivable are, our accounts receivable are, and that amount is, or was, $1,112,270. And now this is what we would expect to collect from the services that we provide, and this is whether we're going to collect it from Medicare, Medicaid, Blue Cross, Humana, United, whatever, workers' comp, from anybody. Hospitals are a little bit different. What you put on the books, which is what they call gross receivables, is what we actually charge patients, but Medicare's not going to pay us that amount, Medicaid's not going to pay it, neither are the insurance companies. We have managed care plans worked out with all of the major ones and most of the ones that where we just, sometimes somebody may come in from another state down here vacationing, and we may not have a plan with them, but usually we accept less than what we charge. And so we try to do the best we can of estimating what it is, and I will tell you that the figure I gave you is probably between 35 and 40 percent of what our gross is. On our audit that was completed at the end of September, the amount was 52.3 percent. So what we try to do, because it sounds like it'd be something simple to estimate exactly how much you're going to get paid from the insurance companies, it's pretty easy with Medicare, but not with the insurance companies. People will buy high deductible plans and things like that, so even though we may get paid 60 percent of what we charge, that does not mean that the insurance company is going to send us 60 percent of what we charge. They're going to send us 60 percent less what the deductible and the co-insurance is for the patient, and then we have to go after the, you know, co and try to collect that money from the patient. So it's not easy, so we try to be very conservative during the year. And I think I've told most of you, and I know I've told our board, it's a lot easier to go to the board at the end of the fiscal year when your audit's done, and so we made a mistake, and we're going to collect $200,000 more than what we expected, and that's a whole lot easier than saying we're going to collect $20,000 or $40,000 less than what we expected. So we try to be very conservative. The third item that I have is a discussion of the new facility scope and budget discussion.
Mr. Chairman, can I inject something before we go into the new facility? Something I wanted to mention. H.D., I've got some, something that's called the HICFA 1500 Claim Form. You know what that is, of course. It's a, I want to pass it to my colleagues, and we can pass it throughout the room. With regard to your accounts receivable, and I am not trying to micromanage in any way, but I just know about this form. This is a universal medical form that is sent by all practitioners who provide services, whether you're a physician's office or a hospital or any type of a clinic. It is extremely complex. My point is, is that on this form is an area relative to authorizations that insurance companies are asking specifically for. Do you have an authorization to proceed with treatment? And if so, there's a section to actually say what the authorization is and the authorization number. And I want you to assure this board that pre-authorizations are happening within your hospital, and also... hospital, and also with regard to what I would call denial management, when you get payment in and you get a check from that insurance company. And as you know, there are reimbursement codes where some payment may have been denied, and I want to be assured that you guys are carefully auditing the payments to be sure that perhaps all they needed was a physician's note, and you'd get reimbursed more money than you did on the first pass. And so I feel like this form is just almighty in terms of what happens and how it's properly set up, coded, and documented. And so my points are to be sure that you are, your staff is carefully doing denial management when you get that check into the hospital, to make sure that it has been paid according to what you put on this claim form, or if not, you're on it immediately to get it cured and resubmitted in a timely basis.
Thank you.
So pre-authorizations are one point I want to be assured of, and I also want to be sure of denial management on the back end.
Thank you, Commissioner. That's quite a long list. I'll try to address these. We don't do as much, since we're not doing MRIs and we're not doing surgeries at the hospital, we don't do as many procedures that require a pre-authorization as larger hospitals do. Now, we do have, there are some insurance companies that require pre-authorization before we can admit a patient. But most insurance companies don't even require that, because most of our admissions come through the emergency room, so it's automatically pre-authorized. Now, there are some that require it, and we do follow up on those, and we make sure we have those pre-authorizations. And the good thing is with everything being digital now, you know, when we go in and enter a patient's insurance company information, it pops up whether pre-authorization is required or not, and so it makes it a little bit easier. So we are doing those. The other thing is denial management. We have our computer company, which is Athena, which has been very, very, very big in the practice EHR and billing system for years and years and years, are now into the hospital business and have been for about five years, and that's who we use, and they're the ones that actually do the scrubbing. They're the ones that edit the claims. You know, when we submit something, it goes through their edits to make sure that it's got the proper modifier on it, or that it does meet medical necessity, things like this, that they know that insurance companies are always going to check and sort of kick those out before it is billed, and then sometimes they're responsible for correcting those edits, and then it'll go out the next day. Sometimes we're responsible for it, and so what we're, and we're trying to keep up with those. The other thing you mentioned was that making sure that we are getting paid the correct amount, and there is software out there, and we've actually put it in into our system where we actually load all of the, or enter all of the payment terms for different insurance companies, and so then when that bill, when we actually do get the remittance advice, and most of our remittance advice, a remittance advice is what you get back from the insurance company, and it says, this is how, you know, they have two or three patients on it, this is what the charges were, this is what the approved amount was, this is how much we're writing off, and this is how much the deductible co-insurance is, and bingo, this is how much you're going to get paid. So that's done electronically now, and so this Athena, our insurance, I mean, our IT company actually receives those, and they enter that into the system. It's all done electronic. They are running that through, or we're in the process of having it set up so that that payment or that reimbursement amount, which is charges less contractual adjustment, does match what we're supposed to get paid. So those are very, very, very good points, and this is probably one of the main things that I have been working on since I've been at Weems Memorial Hospital. We do have what they call revenue cycle management meetings every Tuesday morning at 9:00. We moved the one today forward because I attended those for a while, and then I got away from it, and now I'm back attending every Tuesday, and we look at the ones that are on hold, whether it's for not having a G-code, and I'm sure you know what, being a physical therapist, you know about G-codes, and to make sure that we do have the proper signatures and things like that. So we're doing the best we can. I think we can do better, and that's what we're working on.
So utilization management, if you will, just backcheck Athena, just pull a claim and make sure that they are really doing the job they're doing. Every once in a while, I think spot check's very important, too.
I totally agree.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions?
Yeah, how we doing in collections?
How are we doing in collections?
That'll answer that.
I think, you know, we're doing pretty well, and again, I think that where we really have made improvements and where we're really putting a lot of efforts is what they call revenue cycle management. And what that really is, is from the time that a patient is admitted to the hospital, whether it's for the ER, outpatient, or whatever, that we're getting the proper information, because if you don't get the right information, you're not going to get paid, and then to make sure that we're billing appropriately, and that when we do, that we're capturing the charges, and that when we do send the bill out, that it does have all of the HICPICS codes or the CPT codes or whatever's required on there, and that then I think that the other thing is what Commissioner Bolt mentioned. Claims do get denied, and if you're not following up on those denied claims, you're not going to get paid. And if you're not checking the insurance companies to make sure that they're paying you what they said they were going to pay you, you're not getting it. So we're continuing to work on that, and, but I think our collections are pretty good right now. Again, I think the improvements in here are going to help.
Yeah, the reason I ask, because I've been here from day one, I seen the do's and the don'ts. We started off with a healthcare committee, then we went to the board. I done seen the... Let me give you a little theory about this hospital. Let me give you a little background about it. Back when we first started this thing, Ellen Ball was the US Senator, and he told us, we used to ask him to help with the hospital. He just told us, if we want some help, we got to help ourselves. And that's when we finally, we formed the healthcare committee, and over another year or two, we asked for a penny sale tax. Back then, it went 2 to 1. It was a high number, and these same people with him today that don't want it, they voted, they didn't want it then, that'd be 12 years ago, so that don't bother me. I mean, they ain't gonna never want it. But what my thing is, when we did that, now we promised the people of Franklin County that we were going to build a hospital, and we haven't done it yet. It should have been done, and every time we put it off, it costing more and more money. I mean, that 10.2, it's going up. It been up. It's another $2 million now. This is just a stall tank that they know, to keep it, I mean, we... I know a hospital not going to make no money. I know Amaland not going to make no money. But with that penny, we should be able to sustain ourselves if we get out there and collect the monies, and that's why we have a CEO, CFO, and the people who working in there to get that money in. They make the big bucks. They pull to bring the money in. You pull to bring the money in. That's bottom line. That's why we pay you the big money. CFO, if they ain't collecting the money, no, it's not going to work. But if they get out there and learn them codes every year, because the code's different, I've been hearing about for the last 12 years, how the code's different and all that, they going to differ every year because the government changed. Well, you've got to send your people in there so they can, they can know what the changes I mean, and I believe a hospital will work. It just got to, you just got to get in there and do your part. Now, if you sit down there and just wait on that sale tax to take care, it's not going to work. Okay, how much you collect? You're going to need the other money coming in. It's going to be six in this hand and a half a dozen in the other, but you've got to put that together to make this thing work, and the work got to be worked, and we can do it. Stop putting it off. I mean, that... But you can go ahead.
Mr. Cannon, this email we got last night from ACHA about shutting the hospital, what's that about? The Miss Butterworth read out early, we all got it last night?
Say that again?
The email that we got last night about ACHA, about what's going on at the hospital.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that.
If I may, you were not here, I don't know if you were in the audience, I don't think you got here until about 10:00.
She said...
So there was, under public comments, there was some comments made this morning that the last ACHA report that was done had some substantial deficiencies at Weems. One, it was stated that one include our critical access designation. The other was about the fires...
License.
The fire system, sprinkler system.
And our license?
Yeah, I guess the license, I think, was related to the critical access hospital. I know at some point, you had informed the Board of Directors of some of the ACHA claims. I don't know if it was to the extent that was discussed this morning.
And then there should be a plan of correction stated by the hospital for every one of those deficiencies, and is that plan of correction in process?
Yes, sir. I can address this right quick. Critical access hospital failed to ensure development review and information policies governing the total operation of the hospital failed to ensure the provision of quality of healthcare. This is a requirement by ACHA, and when ACHA came in, and they do surprise visits, we had not, we review our policies and procedures on an annual basis, and our hospital board had actually asked to have a lot of our policies and procedures reviewed by an attorney because they were very old, and we wanted just to make sure that they were right. We also were looking at another company. We have a PEO or professional employer organization that also provides policies and procedure reviews as a cost of what we pay them anyway, so we're in the process of that. But at the time that ACHA came in the door, we had policies and procedures that had not been reviewed since January of last year, and we were not in compliance. Now, the thing is, and there were a lot of them, a lot of policies and procedures, now there were not any, there were surely no immediate jeopardy items. And what immediate jeopardy items are, things that ACHA determines that are directly affecting patient care, and that they feel like that the patients or the public is in immediate jeopardy, and there were none of those. There also were no deficiencies.
Didn't you have the fire issue where we had to have a 24-hour fire watch?
We did.
That would be a jeopardy item, would it not? That would scare everybody.
It would scare everybody, but according to ACHA, it is not an immediate jeopardy item. I mean, it's just not, there were, what we did, we brought in the fire watch because, and the reason we did that was because there was a smoke detector in the maintenance shop that, when it goes off, we weren't sure that it was going to, was connected to the alarm in the hospital. We didn't know if it was or not, and so that was, that made us red-tagged, and we put in the, we had fire watch for almost a week. We had five sprinkler heads that had to be replaced throughout the hospital. We replaced those. They came in and fixed the smoke, once we fixed the fire alarms, we were off fire watch. I mean, excuse me, the sprinklers, we were off fire watch. And then once we came in and repaired the smoke detector in the maintenance shop, right now, we're good. We still have some work that we need to do in there, but there are no deficiencies at this point in time. That's on the life safety side. From the ACHA licensure standpoint, there were no patient care issues according to ACHA, and there were no documentation issues, and all of these deficiencies had to do with, I see something in here about nutritional care. We did not have a registered dietitian. We're required to have one come in, I'm not sure if it's every month or if it's every year. We had a dietitian, but she was not registered, but she worked for a registered dietitian, and she comes in every month and checks our policies, checks things in dietary, but as of last month, we have a registered dietitian that will be coming every month to the hospital. That's been corrected. You mentioned a plan of correction, and a plan of correction is required within 10 days from the time they send a written report, a written report back. We submitted the plan of correction to them. They said there were some things, some additional things they wanted. They gave us until the next Friday, we got it back on Monday. They gave us until Friday to resubmit it. We resubmitted it, and it's been accepted by ACHA. Now, they have, if they want to, they have the authority or whatever to come back within the next 45, you know, after 45 days, up to 90 days, and do another onsite survey. Whether they will do that or not, I don't have any idea, but what I do know is that they have accepted our plan of correction, and what that means is that any deficiencies that they found have to be corrected within 90 days, that date. So, you know, we've done all of that. So yes, it was, the survey was, it was lengthy, it was a lot of deficiencies, but they were mostly to do with the fact that policies and procedures had not been reviewed within the past year, and we fixed that, so.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, to something? Just a thought. As you know, ACHA is a huge almighty organization. We've even talked about some of the standards that they're promulgating relative to building a hospital. It's been my experience that those site survey people come in with what they call a site survey form. Oh, there may be two or three different kinds of those forms relative to different departments in your hospital, and I would think it would be very helpful for you from a proactive standpoint, so when they do surprise you with a visit, you take those site survey forms and begin developing your operating manuals and your documentation relative to those forms in the order in which the form shows. It may be, the first tab on your operating manual might be the sprinkler system, and underneath that is a subsection of all the dates that you tested that system. So when the survey team comes in, you've got all your operating manuals ready to go in the order in which their survey form is guiding them. And I know this seems kind of mechanical, but it just seems like a lot of deficiencies are worrisome, and I'm glad you were able to correct them, but I think this may be a way of helping in the future to get it right sooner.
And that's true, and it also, there's a comment here that the Weems governing board, which is appointed by county commissioners, is specifically identified as possibly responsible along with the CEO. And I can tell you, according to ACHA, it's not possibly responsible, they are responsible.
I want to make sure, then, you have authority in your governing board. I think that's a very important point we need to be talking about as your board of directors.
But I've made it very clear to our governing board, they are responsible for the quality of care at the hospital, which includes this right here. Also, I'm responsible, but they are ultimately responsible. And our board meeting, I'm thinking it was... And our, our board meeting, I'm thinking it was maybe, well, after the ACHA report came out, uh, our board, uh, um, gave me a directive that they wanted a building and grounds report provided to the board at every meeting. And that they also wanted to look at, you know, sort of the things you talked about. They actually wanted to see the preventive maintenance schedule. When are we checking, uh, the fire extinguishers? When are we checking the, the door closures? Uh, when's the last, the last time it was checked? So, our board takes it very seriously that they're responsible for this and we are taking those steps.
I want to be sure that, I want to suggest here to this commission that our hospital, uh, board of directors has specific authority, uh, in directing you and facilitating your job. I want to make sure that they're, that, that they know that they have some command control over this hospital and that they're, that it, it's not, I believe that they should have the authority to be directing you and you're consulting with them.
And they do understand that.
Is it, is it, are we sure that we have, do we have any special policies that this commission should be stating that the hospital board is responsible for the man, for the, for the overall operation of the hospital and its day-to-day activities? We have a CEO for doing that, but, but the, the board itself comes to this commission as well.
I think that's a part of the bylaws of the governing body.
What do my guys think? What do you guys think about that?
The man just told you, it's part of the bylaw you re, they.
You think they're in there? You think the authority's there? Michael, what do you think?
Mr. Chairman?
Do it.
If I might say something before Mike speaks. I hope that the hospital board realizes that they are in control of the hospital and making recommendations. I hope that the hospital board is receiving the information they need to make those decisions. If they're not receiving the, the correct information and there's not transparency to what's going on with ACHA, what's going on with expenditures, uh, if you're going to recommend expenditure, where's the money coming from? These are types of questions, a- as you've heard Mr. Cannon say, you are responsible. And I hope that some of my members that are in the audience right now realize just how responsible you are. Because if it ain't done, and it sounds like me, you're gonna be thrown under the bus. Because you are responsible, just as Mr. Cannon just said. So, he's worked for you, you don't work for him. He works for the board. The board does not work for the CEO. And they're an advisory board to this commission, so we take your advice, uh, to heart. But we want to make sure that you're getting the information to make, to make the decisions that you need to make and you're getting the proper and correct information.
Doug Crammer, chairman of the hospital board. Commissioners, Paris, we do take our job very seriously. And we study the bylaws and operating policies. Some of them, we're having labor attorney address and correct. And that's one of the reasons they weren't available for ACHA. We understand our responsibility, but we also understand that we answer to you as a board. And nothing that we do, we, you know, we can't do anything without your blessing. And so, what, that's not right?
Mr. Chairman, way, way in, I mean, I.
Right, if I'm wrong, yeah, you just tell me.
Yeah. Always great doing these things live, but here's the way the bylaws are written. Uh, the hospital board has been granted by this county commission plenary authority to run the hospital with a few exceptions to things they're not allowed to do. They can't make the decision to build a new hospital, you do. Uh, they're not allowed to buy and sell real property. Those are decisions that you have to make. And I think there may be one or two other limitations on their authority. But with those specified exemptions or exceptions, excuse me, to their authority, they have been granted by you plenary authority to operate, manage and control the hospital in conjunction, not only with the bylaws, but also with, uh, you, you heard the chairman of the hospital board mention their operating procedures and policies that were put in place with, with the grateful assistance by us from TMH. So, to the extent you want to, the extent of their authority, that is the answer to your question, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Go ahead. And see, I tell you like a deal. They, um, they got the authority and you got a crowd of people trying to, to throw you under the bus. I mean, they, anything they say wrong, they looking for boogers. You got a certain group of people looking for boogers. They don't want the hospital be, and they gonna do everything they can. Old paper man, one of them.
Commissioners, if, if I may, and, and I, I hate to, to some degree disagree with, with, uh, Mr. Cannon. But, and I don't know what conversations Mr. Cannon has with his board members, you know, as they, they do. But there are a few board members has approached me. I think the problem is they're not clear and they don't quite understand exactly where their role ends as to whether, uh, Mr. Cannon could come to them and say, well, I did such and such, blah, 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 I just want to let you know. Versus.
He supposed to ask them.
But that's a problem, sir, that's a problem. Versus how I would come to you and say, Commissioners, I need to do X, Y, Z. Are you, let's just take the beautification grant, like that, that's a perfect example. You know, and I think that's the problem. I think there is, because, let's be, let's be honest. We appoint, appoint these people to the hospital board and each CEO, uh, has kind of determined what authority they have in their own, because I don't see anywhere specifically written down, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, where that says the CEO has to approve, bring this for approval in front of the hospital board, you know, these following items. Uh, the CEO needs to get, at least notify the chairman of the board when he is going to remove money, let's say from the savings account versus his access to the operational account, when he's going to contract with somebody to do X, Y, Z. There's no clear definition and your board members have not been trained as such. Now, they are an excellent community board, I will tell you that. They understand exactly what the community needs in reference to healthcare. Have, have no fear about that, that's like an A plus with them. Their role versus what authority they have over the CEO and the overall operations of the hospital, I don't think that's clear to them. But that's, that's my honest opinion, I, I really don't.
That's what I was trying to clarify.
If Doug disagrees with me based on his role as a chairman, that's fine, I, I can understand that. But I don't think they have a clear understanding of when HD needs their approval or recommendation and when he doesn't.
Well, I think that's real easy. That board has command control of that hospital and our CEOs answer to the board.
Yeah, but, okay, but what, what, I, I, just, not to differ with you, Commissioner, but I'm gonna ask a question. Okay, but when does the CEO and the board knows what authority to have up to spending? What money to engage in, what contract? Does he have the authority to hire with, before or after he tells the board? Does he have to explain where he's gonna get the revenue from to hire somebody? That's not, I don't, I mean, Doug, you're standing right there, am I wrong? I mean, isn't that, don't you think that's, that's an issue?
That's, yeah, but that's part, that's the way the policies are developed.
But that, that's what I'm saying. I don't think at any point did we ever sit down and develop policies and say, okay, CEO, if you're gonna hire anybody over forty thousand dollars, you have to bring that recommendation to the board of directors. And they tell you, yea or nay, or they question you as to where you're gonna get the revenue from to support this. Is this, is this already in the budget? You know, since it's in the budget, can he go ahead and do it? There, there are a lot of little things that I think, I, I think it's a simple fix, Commissioners. It's just slight training of the board, what you require of them, and we move forward. I don't think it's a difficult thing to fix, but, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't mean, mean to cut you off. But I think it needs to be done.
Yeah, I mean, he's supposed to ask them, they bold. And then, they approve it. Once they approve it, they come tell us. And that, that's the way it would go, right?
On what exactly?
On everything.
Well, the CEO will tell you no. He will tell you, it's, it's a typical CEO role that wherever he goes, a CEO has this authority. He doesn't, he just needs to notify the board, he doesn't need to ask their permission or see.
Let me, let me interject something here. And I think Mr. Cannon will agree with this. The hospital board can set policy that can require him to do anything we really want him to do. But I don't think that policy will stand unless y'all approve it. Now, am I wrong about that?
To some degree, no, you're, you're, I think some of the members will say, I want to know what, how the county commission feels about.
But what, what I don't want to find myself in a position is, is like previous board members. And the county commission get the impression that we trying to run a hospital without you knowing what's going on.
That what I, now see, that go back to what I was saying, Mr. Doug, uh, as long as he come to y'all. You go, he come to you, you take it to your vote, uh, however.
So what?
And y'all accept it, then y'all in turn tell us.
So, I agree with that. Mr. Chairman, and what I would propose is that I have our board sit down and develop or update some new policies that we feel like is necessary for us to have command and control of the hospital to the degree that y'all want us to. And then, we present them back to you for your approval. Because I don't think that the hospital board can make policy without your blessing. Am I wrong about that?
Well, I, I was gonna answer, Mr. Chairman, if I could be recognized.
Go ahead.
My understanding from Mr. Cannon's presentation is that they currently have Mr. Leonard Carson, who's the, the county's longtime outside counsel on labor law issues. He is reviewing and making comments and proposed changes, I would presume, to the operating policies and procedures. How about have Mr. Morone get in contact with Mr. Carson, find out what his status is? I'm sure that there is a fairly routine industry standard of the, the level of interaction between a hospital CEO and a policy-setting board of directors. And I'm sure that's what Mr. Leonard Carson is in the process of updating as we speak. I'm not sure how long Mr. Carson has had this task in front of him. That was not stated earlier in the presentation. But I think getting the report from your labor attorney is, is, would be step one to get. Uh, maybe step two would be have Mr. Morone inform Leonard of the, the nature of the conversation between the board members and the hospital board chairman and Mr. Cannon and get some advice from Mr. Carson on how he thinks maybe the policies can be updated to more reflect what part of the discussion has been. And then, have those reviewed by the hospital board. Uh, in terms of, of who has the authority to adopt the operating policies and procedures, it's been a while since I've looked at those bylaws, but I would, I believe, uh, as I sit here without having refreshed my recollection by reading the bylaws, I think the hospital board ultimately adopts those operating policies and procedures. Because as I said earlier, you have granted them plenary authority to do everything necessary to run that hospital. And instead of trying to enumerate specifically, you can do A, you can do B, you can go through the alphabet. It was clearer, I think, to have a definition that says you can do everything, but these are the things that you can't do. If, if what you're trying to do is not inside the pot of prohibited actions, then you have authority to do that. Uh, so that would be my recommendation of how to move forward. But in terms of having the county commission look at any proposed policies, there's certainly nothing wrong with y'all. I mean, ultimately, y'all are responsible. So, there clearly is, it would be entirely appropriate for them to present to you, you know, the final proposals on updating the policies and procedures for operating the hospital before they make a final decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
My main concern is if you increase expenditures, then there needs to be a revenue stream there to pay for these expenditures, whatever that expenditure is, other than capital improvements, such as the air condition this morning. We have a capital outlay fund, we took care of the air condition. I wish the air conditions in Weems West would have been took care in a more of a timely manner, but they have been fixed now.
Yes, sir.
And that's another subject. But if the CEO is gonna bring you projects and say, okay, we're gonna do X, Y or Z, okay, where's the money coming from to do this? Do you have the money to pay for this? Do you have the money to sustain this? These are questions that the hospital board should be asking if you're gonna work with the CEO. He just can't bring you stuff and say, sounds good to me and we approve it. You gotta find out where this money's coming from to pay for these projects if it's not a capital improvement, which is done by the trust fund. We're already giving over fifty percent of the trust fund to the operations of the hospital. So, you don't keep coming back to the trust fund wanting more money, more money, more money to sustain the operations of the hospital. Uh, that other side of that fund is for capital outlay, such as the air conditioner that we talked about earlier. But any other expenditures, increase in expenditures without a revenue stream to offset the expenditure, then it's hard to keep going up with expenditures when you don't have a revenue stream to pay for those expenditures.
Commissioner Paris.
That's the way it is in the regular business, I mean.
We developed a budget this year and we've been working within that budget. And we'll develop a new budget for 2020 and we'll operate within that budget. And that's, if there, if you know a better way, I'm, I'm, I wanna hear it.
I'm good with it, Dan.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
May I suggest another model that you could look at? Uh, I would welcome you to get ahold of Mark O'Brien, CEO of TMH, president of TMH. And relative to him and his hospital board chairman, I think that's a model that they would be more than happy to tutor us in, in how they operate their hospital and relative to a CEO and, and the board itself. I think your board can learn a lot from their board. And I think they'd be, they're good and friendly and I think they'd be happy to help you.
Yeah, they, they've been very helpful to us in anything we've asked for them.
Good, press on and try that more.
Mr. Cannon, I need to take up the space, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just, and I, I'll say this maybe more for the, the public's benefit. I know the board is aware of this, but several years ago, the county commission imposed a limitation on the CEO's spending authority at the hospital many years ago, that any expenditure that exceeded the threshold, I believe it was of fifty thousand dollars, we'll have to go back and look at the minutes to recreate that exact motion. But there, there was, to my recollection, a fifty thousand dollar throttle, um, below which the CEO was allowed to make the decisions and above which he had to come back to the hospital board and the county commission. The board has taken action to, um, control that particular issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, can I say something?
Go ahead.
I know this is uncomfortable, but we have to get to a place that we probably haven't really been at before and that's transparency. I think the thing that most all our citizens are really worried about is not about keeping the hospital open. We gotta make sure that we can, uh, afford to do what we're doing and that we're not making any missteps. We don't have enough of a safety net to miss it and make up the difference. We're not in a big place. So, that, that's, at least in my mind, that's some discussion we're having here. Because we have to get, it, it is incumbent upon us first to make sure our residents feel comfortable to know that everything's been done to the best of everyone's ability concerning healthcare in Franklin County, which quite frankly is lacking broad across the spectrum. So, for us to continue to not make any motion to try to improve healthcare is what I take exception to. Is it what everybody's comfortable with, is it what everybody wants? It might not be, that, that's just the nature of making decisions. But we have to move to a place where, and I, I think that's what we've been discussing, where our hospital board knows that they have supported the commission, they're there because commissioners have appointed them. They're there to do the business of the hospital, to make sure that our residents are taken care of and that we can have confidence in our hospital system or our healthcare system, whatever that might be going forward. So, I, I just, I'm glad we had this discussion today. I know it's uncomfortable, but it is of a necessity to do so.
All right, I got a meeting later on, we got, we got to move a little far. Okay, what else? Come on, bud.
I think that was a good discussion. Uh, I do want to clarify some things.
I do want to clarify some things. In the, in the bylaws of the hospital, and Mr. Shearly, you were correct in some of those, there are two other items in there that, that, that also the hospital board cannot do. Number one is they cannot hire a CEO without the county's, without the county commissioner's approval, and that is in the bylaws. The other thing that's in the bylaws is that we cannot purchase any capital equipment without the approval of the county commissioners. Now, as far as what the board's authority, I totally agree that, that my, that the hospital board has responsibility and the authority to, to give me as much authority as they want to. And I've done this a lot, and, and some hospital boards will, will have dollar limits, something, you know, sometimes they'll have different language in there, what, you know, I'm responsible for the day-to-day operation, but it only goes as far as what the county has allowed or what allows me to do. Since we have not had clear policies, which we are going to work on, I've done what I've done in other hospitals, and I've done this for a long time. Now, I can tell you, when I came here in May of, of 2018, I tried to make improvements with revenue cycle and with expanding services and doing different things, and there were a lot of changes made. There was not a huge increase in expenses to do that. We had a budget that we were operating under, and I felt like that was totally under my responsibility, and I thought the county, the board had given me authority to do that. Now, some things that I did not do and have not done, one is when it came, when it looked like we could add ultrasound services, which I thought was a great idea for this county, I did not engage, did not purchase an ultrasound machine, nor even recommend that we have this service until our hospital board approved it. And we did think, and we did talk about where's the revenue coming from, and it was the decision of the board that we, we needed ultrasound services in this community, and that's what we did. The other thing is that if we're looking at recruiting doctors, and I go out and I try to recruit doctors, and I've been doing that for quite a while, but there's no way that I can offer a contract, agree to do anything like that, without giving them a pro forma income statement for about three years and get their approval to do that. So although there's nothing in writing, or there's no policy, you know, when somebody mentions spending $50,000, I'm not going to do that. Now, and it is up to our board to decide how much authority they do want me to, to have, and that I'll be comfortable with that. So that's where we are. Now, getting back, any questions on that, or are we okay? Getting back to what you had mentioned, Commissioner Lockley, about collections, what we've done, we try, we do the best we can to bill appropriately and collect money from third-party payers, we do denial management, we do all of those things. Once it becomes a patient responsibility, after insurance, or if they don't have insurance, then we try to collect the money from them. We do not take a hard line on that. We try to collect it, we send out letters, we make phone calls, we turn them over to an outside agency. We try to determine, if soon as possible, if they're not going to pay us, and if they do meet the indigent care guidelines or the charity guidelines, charity care guidelines that have been established here, then we try to get them approved for that, so that we do get the benefit of the DISH funds and the, you know, the disproportionate share hospital funds and the low-income pool funds. So we do try to do those things. We don't turn patients away, you know, for not paying, and anytime I've talked to our board about it, or any of you, y'all are comfortable, or the impression I get is that you're comfortable with the way we're doing that, as long as we're doing everything we can to get the money from the insurance companies and from the patients, but we're not taking a hard line on that. Okay? Any other questions? If not, I'm going to move on to the new construction. Okay. Michael Morone had talked to me after the meeting last week. He called me, sent me an email, whatever, and said, H.C., how about coming up with a budget for $12 million? And, okay. I have talked to Joe Binham, the architect that was here last week numerous, numerous, numerous times, and, and, you know, he sent me back something, I think Saturday morning we went through it, and so, and, and that's what you have in front of you. But basically, some things I can tell you, we got it down to $12,145,000. Okay? Now, I can tell you that the scope of the project, when we keep talking about scope, the scope of the project has not changed since 2016, except for the fact that we may shell the nuclear medicine area, and we may shell the MAMO area. Other than that, the scope of the project has not changed, and it really hasn't changed since 2010, when, you know, when there were going to be 14 beds, and they were going to act, offer endoscopy and surgical procedures. But 2016 going forward, new entryway lobby, 10 private rooms with showers and all that stuff in the rooms, new radiology department or imaging, and new emergency room. So that scope has stayed the same. Okay? The other thing is that, is that, you know, that, that we feel like we can, if we do shell, and, and the only thing we're looking at right now is nuclear medicine and possibly MAMO, shelling those areas will save us some money. Also, we feel like we can save, and this is coming from Joe Binham, that we can have, have some savings on the construction cost and, and reducing some of the contingencies, because what he kept telling me over and over and over, and I think he told you guys, is that he's asking the contractor, Culpepper, for a figure, and, and they're coming back saying, okay, here's a figure, without really going out and talking to subs and talking to vendors and pricing steel and doing all of those things. So it's, they're, they're doing the best they can, but we don't have good prices. Okay? So when we talked about it, in that $12.1 million, all of those necessary items that he had on there, and Commissioner Parrish, you asked about those with him sitting here. He and I talked about every single one of them. He knows a whole lot more about it than I do. Now, I understand it not as well as he does. We need the full $877,000. These are things that were, were, like for the acoustics, and like for the lighting, which I really didn't understand why we needed additional lighting, but what he said is when they went through the ACA review in 2016, that ACA had questions about the lighting for patient and visitor ingress and egress, and he said, I know this is going to come up, we need to make a provision for it. So that full $887,000 is in there. Now, what's not in there?
Mr. Canning.
Yes.
I got something to say right here. We have battled back and forth, because why don't we just go ahead and let Culpepper sit down and, and do what they do and give us a, Doug, a dead fact what they're building on? You know what I'm saying? To tell us what they're building, what they'll do it for, because all we doing, we doing the same crap back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Let me, let me tell, and I agree with you, let me tell.
Just go ahead and get a, get a, what it will cost to build it, and see if it's 12 million, 15, 16, and come back and see what we'll come up and do.
I'm going to answer you right now, Commissioner, okay? I asked Joe Binham for that, and he's, and which is what the next step needs to be. The problem is that Culpepper, the, the, you know, the engineers, the architects, none of these people are kind of going to come in and redo this program and get a real market basket without being paid for it. Okay? And so what?
Go ahead.
Okay. So what's going to happen, what, what Joe Binham told me, is that by, within one week, he will have a price from his company, from Culpepper, from the acoustic engineer, the electrical engineer, all of these different people, the vendors, you know, like, we've got to have a nurse call system, we need a real price on what it's going to cost, not just a guess or guesstimate. Okay? And so by next week, he'll come back and he'll say, this is what it's going to cost to get that real number. Now, once, if you approve that amount of money to spend, then immediately Joe Binham and the engineers and everybody is going to go out, and they're going to price things to the penny of what it's going to be. And at this, and while they're doing that, we're also going to be going to ACA and starting that process, because it takes about three months. We will also be, I think, Mr. Shearly, you have some work to do with the, with the bond, and then also I've got to secure some, some interim financing or construction financing. So we're going to be all working on this, but in about two or three months, they'll come back to this board, and they'll have, Commissioner, exactly what you're asking for. This is the exact scope of the project, this is exactly what it's going to cost, this is what you're going to get for it, and at that point in time, you either approve it or you don't approve it, because you are not committed until you say, boom, we approve it. But right now, I cannot, nor can Joe Binham really give you a market basket number.
Okay, Commissioners, if, can I cut in now? Okay, so what basically he's asking for is he, myself, whomever you want to give the authority to, needs to send this $12.1 million scope that he come, he just came up with, send this to Joe Binham for actual pricing, I guess. Can I use the term guaranteed maximum price? Is everybody comfortable with that? I see your expression, but that, that, that's what we understand of, of the project.
No, what you're arguing with USDA is they wanting to pursue some other fashion instead of you.
Well, there's confusion with that, and there's some slight, because at one time USDA said that we're no longer in the construction manager risk mode, we're design, bid, build. But conversations that Mr. Cannington had with Mr. Binham, that might not be so. So I have to straighten that out with USDA, and I haven't had time. But, but, but let me, let me finish where we are. So Commissioners, today, what, what, what we're asking for here is to get this, this actual price. I say GMP, Mr. Cannington said true market price, whatever. We need to get a hard number for you, so you guys could look at it and decide if you want to move forward. The thing is about it, Commissioners, it's going to cost you to get that number. So what I need is, is, is what we're asking for is that, are you in favor of us, of sending that, this project to Joe Binham to, to see what it will cost you to get that number? Now, what we could do, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sir, what we could do is, is, you're coming back next week for your budget workshops. You have one Thursday, which is, which is heavy on the agenda. If, if, if I could work with Erin, if she doesn't mind, Friday morning, which is your lighter day, I could schedule a special meeting. By then I should have that number, right, Mr. Cannington? We should have that number, and at that time, you guys could decide, okay, yeah, we're going to spend this to get that, that GMP or that market price or the true price of the project, whatever you want to term it, term you want to tag to it. But that's what we're asking for right now.
I ain't spending that another quarter. I ain't spending that, tell them people we gonna, we got $12 million, if they want to build a hospital, they can build it. If they don't, we'll get somebody else.
The thing is, Commissioner, you won't know.
Think about Joe Biden and all the rest of them.
You won't know.
We done done that.
Yeah, but it's old, that those, those.
Well, it a new one.
Chairman, that's my point. Those plans are tw- what, 12 years old?
I ain't talking about no.
I mean, without this, we really can't move forward.
We, we can tell them how much money we going to spend.
But we don't know what you're going to get for it.
That's why I suggest another company to come in and have a look at this. I think we should say a cap. This Franklin County can afford $12 million, period. Now, start helping us decide what that looks like today. And here's another, I'm not, I don't, not trying to push this company, but you need some people in here to give you some advice on what healthcare looks like today in, in a, in a county like ours.
Well, here's the problem. The problem is, it's like going to build a house and telling your contractor, I have $2 million to build a house, build whatever you can build for $2 million. I mean, I mean.
No, we'll be actively involved in the process. I, I think that house gets scaled down if it's less money.
How many bedrooms? How many bathrooms? What, where, where does that determination come in?
I think, I think it's a valuable number to be able to give a builder a target, and they'll build the proper facility. What do you guys think?
Mr. Chairman, can I weigh in on something? Michael, I think that, the, the thing is, the real issue is, and this, this is what I'm understanding from hearing what Commissioner Lockley is saying, this county has already spent in a, in abundance of a million dollars. All those dollars have went to the contractor, the architect, yes, they might have been a retainer or whatever, but at what point can they not just do this service for us to do this project forward?
They don't do it for free, Commissioner.
They haven't done it for free.
Well.
There's been over a million dollars paid, and there's nothing been done.
How, how long ago?
It, they still, they absorbed that money. What did they do for that money?
They have, there's information out there, but what, what you need to find out is what is the cost to build that same thing today?
I understand that.
And their fee can be built in to their cost, their fee to figure out what the cost is going to be can be built into what they say it's going to cost to build it. But I'd say we reverse it. I like that idea of reversing and give them the target, and let us see what the model looks like.
It seem, it seem to me, if we done paid, if they want the job, they'll, they'll come in here and tell us.
Sure.
What we going to get. If they want to work, so if they don't, it's the whole company that they will. We got to keep on paying that Joe Biden and all the rest of them.
They loving us. They loving us bunch of, bunch up here.
I ain't giving them that another quarter. I ain't going to give them that.
So, can I say, can I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If y'all don't take this action that Mr. Morone's asking for, your hospital's dead in the water. Now, that's just how it is. If we don't authorize him to get that dollar amount and scope, then we're not going anywhere, and they not going to get that without us paying them.
They can get that, they can get it done without.
Well, they could if they wanted to, but there's so much business right now, Mr. Chairman, for them to do, they don't care whether they build this hospital or not.
You get on that phone and call them other people who.
I think, I know a company that'll care if they build your hospital. Have a look at that brochure.
Mr.
Here's an album.
Mr. Bolt, they had an opportunity to bid on this hospital when we were taking bids.
Well, I, I, we're talking about today, though. I, I think you'll find them to be right, right back in again.
The people put us in here to make something, make these decisions.
Michael, how much money we talking about?
That's the point.
How much would it cost for them to?
What I'm asking.
Over a week.
Yeah, what, what I'm asking for is to get the cost, to come up with what the project actually costs. Understand what Joe Binham and, and Mr. Cannington are pointing to are rough estimates by architect, not a contractor, an architect. So what he's saying, if you want a true price of what we want to build, we got to pay for that. That's what they're telling us. If you're telling me no, I'd be, I'd be glad, if that's what the board feels, I'll be glad as we walk out to call Joe Biden and say, Mr. Binham, this is how the board feels. No, that's not the approach they want to take. Where do we go from here? And, you know.
Well, if they going to give the true price, how about a true price for how much we going to spend? We just tell them what we going to spend, and they give the true price on what we going to.
It's the scope that Mr. Cannington came up with is what we're going to try and get priced, is what it is, Commissioners. I mean, I'll, I'll do it.
17,500, 17,000.
You guys, tell me what direction to go in.
May I?
Why do we even need to be thinking about nuclear medicine and some of those sophisticated facilities in a hospital like this?
We should that out.
I hope so, because.
Um, may I? We're not asking for any.
I heard shell for that nuclear medicine.
We're not asking for any decisions today, and it's also not going to cost anything for Joe Binham to go get these bids, and, and he's supposed to have those back by next Monday, or I talked to him yesterday, he said a week. So, you know, these bids, as far as how much it'll cost these to, to, to go and do, do the work to get the market basket. So, Michael, what, here's what I'm suggesting. What if?
Wait, 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 hold up. Hold up now, because H.D., what you told me is that. Hold up now, because H.D., what you told me is that we need the board to approve because there's going to be a cost to come up with the price for this project, that these people won't review our plans for free. So now you're telling me that's not the case?
All right, all right, let me see if I, here's what, here's the thing. Right now, right now, the only per, all right, the only person that, that's talking is Joe Bynum, and he's been in touch with Culpepper some, okay? And, and that's where these prices are coming from. By next Monday, then he's going to have a price from Culpepper, the acoustic engineers, the electrical engineers, the vendors, how much it's going to cost for them to go out and price this project totally. Not, not how much the project's going to cost.
Okay, I got you.
That won't come back for two or three months, okay? And so my suggestion, hearing everything that's said right now, is why don't we allow Joe to go out, the architect, to go out and talk to Culpepper and, and, you know, all of these different engineers and everything, get that price. At the same time, let's talk to Joe about what the Commissioners are saying. What if we just give you $12 million? What happens then? Because the board is not making any decision today. We, you know, there was no decision to be made by the county commissioners today. That's going to come next week after we get these proposals.
Here's the, well, I understand what he's saying. They just going to come out and give us a figure, then we can vote to pay them to give us the roundabout whole figure to do it.
The true, the true fig, the true figure.
Yeah, the true figure.
Right.
Well, it's going to cost you to get to that figure is what I'm trying to say.
No, not the first round, he's saying, not here. They gonna come out and give a, a scope of it, then if we want to pay to see how much the total thing is, then we got to.
But Commissioner, maybe I, I wasn't clear. So that's what I was asking for today. Do you want to move forward in that manner so that Friday I can schedule a special meeting? So when he gets that number, that's going to, I'm sorry, not this Friday, next Friday. So when he gets that number for you, you make a decision then. Do you want to go out and get the true pricing?
Right.
That's, okay, so you got me. But Commissioner Lockley, the chairman said, "No, because no matter what number they come back with on next Friday, he's not paying it." What he's trying to say, "Look, you got, we got $12 million. Are you, what can you build for $12 million?"
No, it's like this, if we gonna use that contractor and we done picked him, why if we paying him to give us a number? We done picked him and gave him the job. He got the job. He pulled a come and give us a number.
Yeah, but the, the thing is, Commissioner, if you, on, on Mr. Kennington's report, there are things now that have been added to the scope, that's been added to the scope that were included 2016. So you got to get prices for that.
He gonna have to do that anything. That's just like if they change all the lady on him. He gonna charge us every time, every month? I mean, he, I mean, he gonna charge... What he gonna do? He gonna, "Well, I got to do this." It gonna come up every time you get a change on it.
Change the man, change the light bulb and already charge us $10,000.
So, but let me, let me, can I say something, Mr. Chairman? My opinion is, is if you say, "Okay, we got $12 million. Build us something for $12 million." Well, you might not give it a half a building.
Might not give them one bed.
If you tell them you had $100 million, they gonna spend all that, too. You got to know what you gonna be paying for this stuff. I, I agree with you. It's very frustrating to keep paying these people and we ain't done that.
I agree with you on that.
But you can't give them $12 million and say, "Okay, what can you do for it?" And they build you something and you ain't even got a door to get in.
Or a bed laying in.
I mean, you don't know. You, you got to know what you paying for. You know, that's just another way of looking at it. I understand the frustration. I understand that.
Well, please, just...
Let me... They need us to make a motion to that.
Let, let me ask, let me ask you all of them.
All he's saying, one more time, Mr. Chairman. All Michael's saying is authorizing...
I make a motion.
To give us a number of what it's going to cost for them to get.
I make, I, I, I make a motion.
If they want to charge us a million dollars to get the numbers and we don't want to pay us that.
And I'll set up a special meeting for that.
I got, I got a motion on the floor.
That won't cost you anything.
It won't cost anything between now and Friday.
So move.
I got a, I got a...
It's going to come up any, then...
Friday, you gonna have to make a decision.
Make a decision. We'll stop this arguing.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed?
And that includes the authorization for the special meeting?
Right.
Attorney Schuler?
Yeah, all of it.
That's what I'm asking for.
Well, we don't have anyone here to amend their second.
Oh.
Wait for them to come back.
The first been amended.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have our second.
I know.
So...
Do we have a discussion going on right now?
Mr. Chairman, my suggestion would be just to act on the motion and second and then deal with authorizing the special meeting as a separate motion later.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, man. Go ahead, Commissioner. You, you want to discuss them?
Well, I, I think we need to get another opinion into this county about what our healthcare system looks like. The, the plans we have right now that we're talking about are over 12 years old. This is new, modern stuff. There are terms out there like microhospital that's been thrown around here the last couple of weeks, and I'd like to suggest another company come in here and give us an opinion among what we need in the way of a hospital and its cost. I'd like to recommend Erdman to come in and just give us a second opinion.
Oh, they, we got him, he had amended his motion to, what you, what you...
My motion to have a, a special meeting, a special meeting Friday after the workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, Friday after the budget workshop.
I made a motion.
Okay, second been amended. All right. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? They passing that.
All right.
Okay, so, okay, we're good. I won't even touch that again. All right.
So if we don't like what Culpepper says, here's your backup. How about that? This is another company that can come in and talk to us about it.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we ain't even put that in the motion.
So on Friday, I'll be bringing, I'll schedule a special meeting and inform each of you as to where we are with that, and then we could decide, Commissioner, if you want to tear it up, it's right back at that, that works for me then.
Yeah. Okay, next on the dinner. H.T., you too?
Yes, sir. I'm through. I'm sorry. We're good?
Okay.
Make sure I have other questions.
No, we don't. Y'all, y'all want to keep on?
We ain't even got started.